Wilson County Commission meeting July of 2018. And I encourage you to come back as often as you can. This time tonight Commissioner Stafford has our prayer and pledge and I'll let her come forward.
Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, this is a very proud moment for me. Start off the saying, I've got a mini-me that I'm gonna allow to do the pledge for us. Very intelligent, she's smarter than her nana. And also, I have got a trainer bus driver that is a member of the Wilson County School Systems, Mr. Sean Kennedy Pastor of New Christian Life. And I'd like to invite them both up to the podium. You're learning about 20 years, she is a mini-me, so y'all get ready. I'd like to introduce Ms. Michaela Shipman and Pastor Sean Kennedy.
Please stand.
Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner. Let us pray. Father God, we're grateful. We thank you for this hour. We thank you for this privilege. And I know every heart in here can agree that we thank you for the opportunity and privilege to serve. We thank you for the leadership. Father, we thank you for them having a sober mind and they're practicing proper judgment in the midst of a changing, sometimes chaotic and challenging world. We thank you for the work that they do. We just pray, Father, that you will continue to guide us. Father, as we embark upon this school year, Father, we pray that you will put your loving arms of protection around our children, around our teachers, all around all the administrators. And Father, that we will be vigilant. And Father, that we would observe the different triggers before another when it's pulled. We thank you for our law enforcement. We thank you for the service that they give. We pray, Father, you will continue to strengthen each household represented in here, every leader. Father, we thank you for how they govern themselves, their households, and Father, most of all, how they look over our communities. We give you praise and thanksgiving and we pray after this meeting is done that it wouldn't be about who's the greatest, but that you are a great God. We give you praise and thanksgiving. In Jesus' name, let us all say.
Thank you both. Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. You will press yes on your panel recorder, not presence, please. Mr. Robinson. When he present and five absent. This time Commissioner Walker, for the steering committee.
At this evening at 6:45 in the upstairs conference room, I move that the minutes be accepted and agenda adopted.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Adoption of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? And there is no consent agenda denied. This time we'll have our Commissioner Patton come forward with HOSA and FBLA, Watertown High School National Winners.
I need the HOSA group and the FBLA group. If one of you come on, stand on each side here, please. Last month, you'll recall that we have an update on our FBLA group that went to the Nationals. So, we have an update on them and we have also another group that we're recognizing tonight from Watertown High School. And these groups are both from the CTSO team, the, you know, the continuing, the career and technical student organizations. So, that's part of the CTE programs. So, that's very important for our schools to have, that, you know, not just always have a college degree, but we're finding out now that there are too many people have those college degrees and these young people are from using those different types of educational avenues. And I'm especially proud of the ones from the HOSA because being a nurse, the health occupation program, I'm all about that. So, we'll start, well, do our refresher with the FBLA team from last month. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring the Watertown High School Future Business Leaders of America students who participated in the national competition. Whereas, this commission adopted Resolution 18612 honoring the Watertown High School Future Business Leaders of America. And whereas, at the time of that resolution, a group of seven students were preparing to participate in the FBLA National Championship Conference, June the 27th, 2018, in Baltimore, Maryland, to compete against some of the best students in the nation. And whereas, since that time, those students have successfully competed at the National Leadership Conference. And whereas, Landry Williams, Kent Jones, Amanda Stanley, and Hannah Josie represented the state of Tennessee as the first place winners in the parliamentary procedure team event. And whereas, Sidney Morrell, Lenora Upchurch, and Cassidy Parrisher represented Tennessee as first place winners and competed in the introduction to business presentation with more than 135 other teams and made it to the award ceremony, finishing ninth in the nation of those 135 teams. And whereas, Ella Williams, their local advisor, and Jay Williams served as the chaperones for the trip. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we further congratulate those Watertown High School Future Business Leaders of America students for their presentation and competitions at the National Leadership Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, and recognize with distinction the introduction to business presentation teams Sidney Morrell, Lenora Upchurch, and Cassidy Parrisher for finishing ninth in the nation and being onstage at the award ceremony. Be it further resolved...
This is Ms. Ella Williams, repeating. Thank you for recognizing these students. They started working on this project in September of last year. I'm very proud of them. They were all the sophomores when they competed. I've got 10 more years to take to the competition, so thank you.
Resolution 1875, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring Watertown High School Health Occupation Students of America Public Health Team. Whereas, the public health team of the Health Occupation Students of America, HOSA, of Watertown High School recently competed in the International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas. And whereas, this team of students, Brittany Combs, Carly Dawkins, Tyler Schumay Taylor, Sarah Evans, Juliana Upchurch, Candy Beatty, and Toni Ashford competed in Dallas against 54 charter associations, including all 50 states, American Simona, Canada District of Columbia, and Mexico, where they placed fourth overall in the nation. Whereas, in order to reach the final stage of competition, they finished first in the regional competition in January at Volunteer State Community College. And whereas, from there, they then competed against the five other regions in the state at the state conference where they placed second, finishing behind Lincoln County High School and in front of Smith County High School, all three teams being eligible to advance to the international conference in Dallas. And whereas, the purpose of this competition is to encourage HOSA members to work as a team, to plan and teach others in their community about public health initiatives with the event involving a team of two to six members who create an effective, dynamic, and creative public health presentation. And whereas, at the national competition, the Watertown High School team was the only Tennessee team that made it to round two in their event. And whereas, when all competition was concluded, the top 10 teams were recognized onstage where Watertown High School was announced as the fourth place winner. And whereas, while the members named in this resolution competed at various times along the way, Kazny Beatty was unable to attend the international conference due to conflicting dates with her previous scheduled church mission, so Toni Ashward stepped in to take her place, epitomizing how a team works when faced with challenges. And whereas, this team was very ably instructed and led by Stephanie Ware, RT, health science instructor at Watertown High School. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize and honor the Watertown High School Health Occupation Students of America Public Health Team for their success in finishing fourth in the nation in the national competition at Dallas, Texas. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to each team member, their instructor, Stephanie Ware, and Watertown High School Principal Jeff Luttrell for display at Watertown High School. Have a motion before you.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank y'all. This group worked really hard. They've competed in this event. This is their third year now and most of them are seniors. I do get two of them back, but I was glad to see them go out with a bang.
Thank you.
Thank you both and congratulations, keeping the Purple Tigers alive. Thank you, Commissioner Patton. Job well done. This time I'd ask for Mr. Eddie Callis to come forward as well as Commissioner Souvenada as we have a resolution concerning the Day of Prayer. Thank you, Commissioner Souvenada.
It's always fun to have Eddie Callis standing beside you. This is Commissioner Becky Seaver sponsored this, but she could be here this evening, so they've asked me to do it. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee designating July the 29th, 2018 as a day of prayer for our schools in Wilson County. Whereas, the Day of Prayer for our schools was conceived by members of the Kiwanis Club of Lebanon, Tennessee after the murder of several students and teachers at Columbine High School in Littleton, Colorado. A tragedy which caused Americans across the nation to become concerned for the safety of their children at school and sadly was not the last example of violence in an American school. And whereas, the first observance of a Day of Prayer of our schools was sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Lebanon on August the 14th, 1999. And whereas, the project has been repeated each year since then when the 20th Annual Observance of a Day of Prayer of our schools to be held on July the 29th, 2018. And whereas, this project seeks to unite the entire community in prayer for the safety of our children by encouraging all churches and places of worship to dedicate a portion of their worship service that day to special prayer seeking God's help in keeping our children safe at school. And whereas, the first two objectives of Kiwanis are to give primary to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life and to promote the daily living of the golden rule in all human relationships. And whereas, with no greater blessing from God than the gift of our children. Kiwanis members believe that the safety of our children in schools should be a very high priority and they are requesting the entire community to join in this effort. And whereas, Kiwanis also believe that the solution to many other, excuse me, to many other problems existing in our society, our spiritual nature rather than political, and new laws and more metal detectors in our schools will not change the way people treat each other. And whereas, members of the Kiwanis Club believe that there is no better thing than prayer to seek a safe school environment for our children. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that in furtherance of the efforts of the members of the Kiwanis Club of Lebanon, Wilson County, Tennessee, we hereby designate July the 29th, 2018 as a day of prayer for our schools in Wilson County and urge the entire county to join in this effort. I move.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you, Sue. This resolution says, I think, everything that needs to be said. We love our children and we cringe when we read the newspapers or see on television where there's been some terrible incident somewhere and we hope and pray that something like that never, never ever happens in Wilson County. I would hasten to say that this project is sponsored by not only the Kiwanis Club of Lebanon, but also the Kiwanis Club of Mount Juliet, where they are promoting it in the churches down there. We have sent a letter to every church in Wilson County that we have addresses for and we've asked them on that day, the 29th of August, to devote some time of their worship service to remembering that school is starting in two days. It's a stressful time. It's a time of excitement, but it can also be a time of tension and disagreement. And we think that if on Sunday, before school starts, if all the people of Wilson County join together in prayer, asking God to keep our children safe as school begins, that that will have some impact. And we think, as the resolution says, that can have more impact than more laws and more metal detectors. We need to change the way people treat one another and that's what we're hoping to accomplish. Thank you, members of the County Commission, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Callis. We thank you for your service as well, Mr. Callis, to our community as well as the Kiwanis Club and all that you do for Wilson County. Report for the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
I had it 6:30 upstairs in the conference room. We got a set of minutes in the packet. I move that be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Reading of the minutes? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. This time we'll ask Mr. Randall Clemmons to come forward as he wants to make a presentation to you. And I will, at this time, also read that Eddie McQuarrie was appointed to the Global Utility Board and John Johnson was appointed to the Middle Tennessee Natural Gas Utility Board. Let's not require any action on your part, but they asked to have this notarized through our committee by being in the minutes. Mr. Clemmons.
We appreciate the County Commission allowing us to come and share tonight as it's fair time in Wilson County. You have a packet tonight that was at your place there that we would ask you to open right now, that we would kinda like to go through with you in just a minute. The fair will be August the 17th through the 25th entitled Magic Memories. It is going to be nine days of showcasing Wilson County and the great place that we have to live here. It will showcase our county government, the James E. Ward Ag Center, the talents of the people of Wilson County, our school system, our businesses, and Fiddler's Grove. And it will show everyone that we are the place to be. This room is where the Wilson County Fair began as this commission, over 40 years ago, approved the purchase of the land that contains the James E. Ward Ag Center. And we would not be here tonight if it was not for the support that the County Commission did at the beginning and has continued to give the Wilson County Fair for the last 39 years as we put on this 39th fair. We're here to say thank you tonight to you commissioners, to Mayor Hutto, to the Ag Center Committee, to Quentin Smith, to WEMA, to the Sheriff's Office, the Road Commission, the Waste Management, and our school system. The fair would not exist if it was not for each one of the entities of Wilson County coming together to support us each year and to help us make the Wilson County Fair the very best that it can be. Our fair began with a very humble beginning and we still want to be humble as we continue to try to make it your fair each year. It has become a big business as our budget is now over $2 million. We have spent, by the time the fair opens, some $500,000 this year in improvements to the James E. Ward Ag Center that we believe will greatly enhance our fair and will also greatly enhance the Ag Center for years to come. We've been able to resurface many of the roads and parking, additional fencing, a new heritage barn that will contain an extensive agricultural exhibit that was made possible by a $50,000 donation by Federal Land Bank and some $25,000 that was supplemented to that by Wilson County Promotions. We're always concerned about the security that happens during the fair and you may remember going out there and you've seen a lot of concrete barriers. Well, before the fair starts this year, we will have security poles that will be in the pavement that will suffice to protect the fair and will also be able to be used for the James E. Ward Ag Center for any event that occurs there. We are currently in process of putting fiber to all the admission gates and we will have electronic ticketing this year. This will also be available to be used by other events that are having events at the James E. Ward Ag Center. As a result of the expo center that you made possible last year, we were able to take the Wilson County Fair to an all-new level. And with that, it gave us a major responsibility as a board of directors of some 300 local Wilson County people to take our fair to another level as well. And we hope as you come to this year's fair that you will see that. We have contracted with Righthofers Shows, which is the oldest family traveling carnival in America, beginning in 1896. It is the largest, most modern inventory of rides in America. And you're going to see a major difference as you come to our fair. One of the first things you will see as you come in is you're going to see the Euro Slide that you have a picture of in your packet tonight. That is a 65-foot tall slide with seven lanes of different colors that is just arrived from Italy. It is the largest portable slide in America and it will only be at four fairs in the United States this year and we are one of those four. This carnival will be bringing over 50 rides. You're going to see a kiddie land that is expanded, that is back in the back of the Ward Center in the shade, that will help our families to have a more enjoyable experience. The new carnival has already brought to us some 100 park benches that will be spread throughout the grounds to give our families more time to be able to sit down. We are very concerned about our people being able to come to the fair and being able to afford to do that. And we have created something new this year called a mega-ticket that is already on sale. It is $25. It is good for one day admission and ride one price. That is good any day during the fair. That is a 20% savings and it will be sold to Thursday before the fair begins on Friday at a lot of our local banks here in Wilson County and surrounding counties. We are continuing with our off-site parking at the Old Lebanon High School, Compton University Football Field with bus transportation there and that will be nightly. In your packet is a sheet like this that has some pictures of new entertainment that is at the fair this year. You'll see the Sea Lion Splash, the Camel Kingdom. We'll also be celebrating the 100th year of John Deere. And on the other side of it, you will see our theme and that you'll be seeing billboards and different things advertising the fair, also along with the three concerts that will be going on there on Monday and Tuesday night of the fair. We like to think of ourselves, and I don't want to take away from Dr. Wright tonight, but that we are going to be the largest classroom in Tennessee and Wilson County for nine days. We have a major responsibility to educate our children and adults about the agricultural experience and that they know, as Hale Moss used to say, that milk does not come from, that chocolate milk does not come from a brown cow. This is our Year of the Milk and so you'll be seeing a lot of that as well. It does take us some $2 million to put the fair on each year, but we feel like that it is a major revenue for Wilson County as our hotels will be full on any night at the fair. As you look at the license plates in the parking lot, you will see over 20 states represented and last year we had several different countries that was represented as well. Our fair is made possible not only because of you, but because of a 300-member board and some 1,500 volunteers that have a great passion each year to put on a fair for you that will be an enjoyable experience. They work hard. If it was not for that, our fair would not be profitable. And as a result of their volunteer hours, the profits that we are able to make each year go back into improvements for the James E. Ward Ag Center and us having the ability to put on a fair for the next year. In your packet tonight is a dinner invitation for you and a guest for August the 23rd at 6:00 PM. And we do hope that you will come and be with us that night. It is going to be at the pavilion up in Fiddler's Grove as it has been in the past. But what will be unique this year is that you're going to be right in the center of a lot of new things at the fair. You will be next door to the new barn. You'll have new fencing around you. You can look one way and see the sea lions and you can see the other way the camel kingdom. This is one time a year that our entire county comes together as one. We meet old friends. We make new friends. We reunite with a lot of groups and it is again a place that we showcase Wilson County. Again, we cannot thank you enough for what you do, for the support that you give us and we will never forget where we come from and how it happens each year because of the support of the Wilson County Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons and Mr. Colmer as well for all you guys activities that you do to bring us together and to keep us on the map nationwide. Mr. Goodall, any additions to be added to the notary list? Do I hear a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Next on our list is the election of the Road Commission for Zone 1. The agenda has it that the following individuals can be nominated. Commissioner Chad Bernard, District 5. Commissioner Kenny Rich, District 6. Commissioner Mike Justice, District 15. Commissioner Gary Keith, District 17. Commissioner William Glover, District 19. And Commissioner Souvenada, District 23. Floor is now open. Any commissioner can nominate anybody. This time, Commissioner Keith. Motion for Mr. Kenny Rich. Other nominations? I hear a second. All in favor, say aye. Congratulations to Mr. Rich. Are you willing to serve? Next is the Audit Committee. Five members here. You already confirmed the appointment of five members to the serve a one-year term on the Audit Committee. Upon your confirmation, I would like to appoint Commissioner Frank Bush, Commissioner Chad Bernard, Commissioner William Glover, Mr. John Lancaster, and Mr. Jerry Taylor. Information about these individuals have been placed in your packet. Any discussion, conversation? I hear a motion to approve. Your second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Board of Zone Appeals, you are to elect one member to the Board of Zone Appeals to serve a five-year term. I'd recommend for your consideration, Mr. Gary Thorne. His information was with you and he has served for us recently. Any comments? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Report for the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Rich. Emergency Management Director, report Director Cooper.
Board of County Commissioners, in your packet you'll see our total cost for June, $1,299. Brings our year-to-date... Brings our year-to-date total to seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one. Last two months has been pretty busy with events and activities. Most of those you have listed there for you. Outside of that, that completes my report unless there's any questions.
Any discussion or any questions for Director Cooper? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Report from the Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
No votes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. The numbers there in front of you are pretty much on par. Civil process is up a little bit and here we go again, talking about the jail. It's, uh, it's four hundred and eighty, eighty-something people right there. But that's the day when there's a lot of court people and stuff in from other counties. So that's when that would be reflected. So we're averaging around four fifty, four sixty right now. So it's, uh, we're, we are in discussions. We had a meeting last week again with some people and we should be getting some figures that I can pass on to you here in the near future. The road crews continue to stay busy. I encourage you to contact us if y'all see roads that need assistance. We're picking up tons and tons and tons of garbage. Uh, one more thing, I want you to look at page three, I believe it is. Our two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year stats are on that page, pretty much in the middle of the page. I want you to look at them figures because our SROs are staying busy. Everything, one thing I want you to notice is custodial issues. Six hundred and thirty of them. That's probably one of the most, it could be a dangerous thing when, when custodial issues come up in a school. And so they're dealing with them every day so the teachers and administration don't have to do it. And, uh, but you can see it's been a very active year in the SRO division. They're doing a great job and I appreciate everything they do. Unless there's any questions, that completes my report.
Got a motion and second discussion. Commissioner Walker.
Yes, sir. I'd like to take a moment to honor one of the sheriff's deputies here tonight. I was, last Tuesday morning, I was leaving breakfast rodeo at Mount Jewett and coming down Lebanon Road on West Main and I ran upon an incident that happened right in front of the nine-one-one office. Just happened a minute or so right before me and there's a gentleman, Mr. P.T. Tomlin. He's right here. You please stand for us. As I'm coming up on this accident, I noticed that the power lines are almost about maybe ten or twelve foot from the road and this truck had some type of medical incident and hit this pole head-on. Very dangerous situation. As I'm driving slowly by, I looked to the left and who did I see but Mr. P.T.?
Johnny on the spot.
Yes, sir. Taking care of business and he was sharing with me tonight that when this happened, this truck was right in front of him. He was right there when it happened and he was very slow and cautious and backed off and saw it happening. And those thirty-five years of experience paid off and he did a great job and I think we should all thank him for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker.
And I would like to also commend Director Cooper because the power went out at nine-one-one and we had a switch of transfer and everything went off without a hitch and thank you for what you do there as well. Okay? Any other questions for Sheriff Bryan? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Sheriff. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford. Director of Schools, report. Dr. Donna Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, you have a very, very short report in your packet. There's a correction that needs to be made on the last page. We have the board meeting listed as August the sixth, but we are waiting to make sure that we would be in line with what the commission meetings would be set up and please change that to August the thirteenth. So that would be the correction there. I want to do a hats off to the Sheriff's Department. They continue to help as that extra resource, that extra hand as far as when we're looking at bullying and harassment prevention. Scott Moore, in fact, was on W K R N talking about the program and their three days that they spend at Camp Victory working with youngsters. And, you know, until you see many of the issues that our young people are having to deal with on a day-to-day basis, you don't understand the magnitude of when you have a sheriff's department, SROs, that can work with youngsters and give them that sense of peace, safety, and know that there's adults that care and they're not there just as a police officer. And so I can't say enough. And as the sheriff was relating, as far as this, he referred to as the custodial issues, some of our biggest problems that we face in our schools right now are when there are custody disputes between parents and the kids are in the middle. And there's been many times that where the SROs had to escort these adults out of the building and we do the best we can to make sure that it's not something that the kids are having to deal with while they're in school because they're going to have to face it when they get home. And so we're, we're very thankful for our SROs. Tonight, you recognize two groups as far as HOSA and the FBLA. When you look at HOSA, they're, they were ranked fourth internationally. I know it was mentioned being nationally, but there was also other countries. It's an international event in Dallas. They ranked fourth. Didn't happen by accident. And then FBLA, okay, I see you, Mr. Moss, back there. He's wanting to make sure, get that credit in there. And then when you look at FBLA, ninth in the country. And when I see the, as far as the continued recognition at the national level that our schools are, you know, more or less performing at, and it's not only about the programs, but it's about the teachers and the administrators that are supporting it and making it happen. And without that, you know, it wouldn't occur, but it's also the support that comes from this commission. Even with the disagreements we might have, the support from the commission is recognized and I want to thank you for that because this, this school district is being recognized not only in CTE education, but in technology and other venues. And, and again, it's the dedication of teachers, administrators, making that happen. And as of, oh, I want also, Mr. Callis? Thank you. I don't know that I've ever been in a district where that idea, that day of prayer, and even though it comes after the wake of tragedy, but it's the idea that we have committed adults aligned with churches that not only bless our schools, but ask for the protection of the Lord on our children every day as well. There's people that are working in there as well. And I've never shared it with this group, but we meet quarterly. We've got a ministerial association that meets with our administrators three times a year. And it started out with fifteen ministers. It's grown to well over forty-five. And even though there's always that talk about, you know, we need that separation, ladies and gentlemen, if ever we get the need as far as not only the church involvement in our schools, and it's not about, you know, it's proselytizing, it's talking about how we can work not only to take care of and protect our youngsters, but to make sure that they're in a safe environment. And so thank you for that day of prayer. Uh, we'll, there'll be many of us out there as well because it's, it's much needed and much appreciated. As of Friday, the thirteenth last week, we are at four hundred and four kids since we closed school in May. They'll still be coming. And with that, that concludes my report. However, you have a packet that I believe that Ms. Doughty has to share with each of you and that packet of information is based on our meeting last Thursday with the board and you find in it information as far as the approved needs assessment for fiscal year nineteen, general purpose school budget for fiscal year nineteen, and the approved bid for the North Green Hill School. And all that information that was presented to the board is in that packet for you to review before joint meeting on the twenty-third. And I believe packets are up there on the corner of the thing. So thank you, Sondra. And, um, if there are no questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Any discussion? Commissioner Bush?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all you do. I have three questions on school board policies, if you'll bear with me.
And I will do my best, not knowing that you were going to ask these tonight, that I might have them memorized at least enough to be able to answer them.
You may be aware of some, of some of the issues that I'll be asking about.
But I'll try.
We're about to see some details on the proposed new high school. My question, the only question I have on that, without having seen the details, is how many alternative expansion plans have you all examined before you came to the conclusion that we had to build a brand-new high school? If any.
Now, you use the word alternates. Are you talking about other options besides looking at a brand-new high school? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly, ma'am.
Um, I don't know that there were any other options that we saw as being viable options other than expanding on existing high schools, which we've had this conversation before as far as building them out to twenty-five hundred to three thousand, which we said that as far as not only our board, but the policy in there that we are not looking at high schools of that size.
So no alternatives have been examined and priced out? So we have no comparisons to make when we get this data in front of us?
Yes.
Fair enough. Thank you. Six years ago, almost to this date, I asked Dr. Davis why it was that the school's, school board's policy that upon terminating a teacher or any other employee, no reason would be given for the termination and in fact, if asked by the terminated employee, he or she would be told, "We cannot disclose why you are being terminated." I made, my wife made the presentation for me in front of the board and the chairman at the time requested that a study be done to determine what our neighbor counties did with respect to this, that is specifically not giving a reason for termination, which as a businessman, I find surprising, inexcusable. For a teaching organization not to take the opportunity to help somebody who apparently has not lived up to the goals and standards of the, of the school district, to teach them how to do better in their next job, you're unwilling to do that, astounds me. So my question is, does that policy stand? And first of all, does the policy still stand?
Well, first, let me, you know, that, you had many facets to that question and much of it, you went back six years ago. I'm going on my fifth year right now. But I will, as memory serves me, I think I'd been here for my first meeting and you stopped me right over there and asked me that very same question because you wanted an opinion. Didn't even have any context or background, if I remember correctly. And I said that as far as certified staff, teachers, if they're being terminated, they are given a reason, I can assure you. Classified or support staff that are non-renewed, their services are no longer needed. That is language that you're going to find that is used in any school district in this state. And again, you're, you know, that was one of the things that you had asked and I, and I know that you raised your eyebrow at me because you'd also already been given that answer apparently from then HR Director, Mary Ann Sparks. It's also been said to me that, you know, the word circulated that we're terminating teachers with no reason given. And Mr. Bush, I can assure you, when a teacher is terminated, not only has it been an opportunity they're given due process and they're very well aware of why they've been terminated. A teacher, a certified staff member.
By being very well aware, that means that the reason, the specific reason for their termination is written down and is recorded, correct?
Written down, in what capacity are you referring to?
The assumption is always being made, if somebody's terminated, clearly they know why they're being terminated. Well, that is not always the case, as you well know.
It's certified staff. Now, you're splitting hairs at this point because classified staff, we do non-renewals unless it's so egregious that there's not only a termination, but there might even be some possible charges placed. So I don't want to get into as far as getting down in the weeds, but you know, if you want to sit down with us.
We can talk about the two different categories differently, if you will.
And going back into the business world, you know, not knowing, you know, as far as your business background, but I can speak to as far as not only many of the business world. In my husband's world, as far as, and he's retired and been retired for many years, but many times that there was no reason given, but your box was packed and you were exited out. So again, in different capacities, there's different reasons. And so I know you said in your world that that just never would have happened.
Well, I would make a formal request that you take, review with the help of Mr. Jennings, who was asked six years ago to do this, to review your policy with respect to not providing a reason, whether, whether it's certified or classified, it doesn't matter.
Yes, sir.
Take a look at it and, and you or the board or the proper person come to some conclusion that this in fact is the proper way to do it.
Well, I believe that
Can you do that?
It's already been made. Well, certainly. And I think you've been in correspondence with our new HR director, Rebecca Owens, who is also an attorney. And so again, I think that response has been given to you as well.
That is not correct. You, you can plead, you can request your HR director to give me a response if in fact she's willing to, which goes to my third question.
I think I'm ready for this one. Go ahead.
Is, is it a new policy that the school board is requiring of county commissioners an open records request in order to get information that they need to ask these kinds of questions?
Well,
And I say that, let me just, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Let me just, which astounded me because I've made, I've made two requests in the past month of
You kept us busy, yes.
Senior, senior staff, both of which I believe you're aware of. I, I asked Mickey to help me in analyzing ACT scores, which is
Excuse me because he's over finance and I'm over curriculum instruction, but go ahead.
But you're aware of that request?
Yes.
And his analyst did a superb job.
It's, it's my analyst, but let's, let's not.
Your analyst did a superb job. And there was no hassle, no, no questioning my right to ask the question. She, she did the analysis and provided it to me and I was very pleased and I thank you for that. Shortly after that, I asked for a list of terminated employees.
Next, you asked for a list of wanting teachers placed in quartiles at the time, much like we did the ACT work and I said that Jennifer had, we were getting ready for the school year start. Then you asked for the terminations. Just had to interject that.
Fair enough. The, the most important one was the list of terminated employees to verify whether or not they in fact had been given reasons for termination. And my, the response I got was total obfuscation and there was absolutely no response. She required of me all sorts of open records requests, which I found insulting and unnecessary for colleagues in the same government trying to work together and from my standpoint, trying to obtain some information and from her standpoint, not wanting to provide the information. So is that the new policy that all of us now here have to fill out open records requests to get information from the school board?
Mr. Bush, that is not a new policy as speak, and that is not something that's a new request as far as an open records request. And Ms. Owens was very respectful in letting you know as far as not only the process, how to proceed, because with that termination, and I know you're talking about as another government entity, there's still personal information that's involved in that. And she would have been more than willing, and I think she shared that with you twice and I think you filled something out but didn't sign it and, and you know, did not want to do that because again, there's personal information in there in those terminations and she would have been more than willing to share that with you. As to not, if, if presenting that this is a new policy, there's been open records requests by this body before and we have, you know, followed it through and, and in fact, one that I can think of that was thirty days and approximately eighteen thousand dollars in labor, but we do, when there's an open records request, we follow through and
Well, I, I have no doubt about that, but my point is, open records requests are really not necessary when two colleagues in the same government can discuss items and ask for information and share information back and forth. And I hope that that sharing can continue going forward as in the past we have done.
And Mr. Bush, with all due respect and using the word colleagues, that even with that sharing of personal information, I don't know that we would know what your reason would be as far as how that would be shared or how that would be used. And it's a simple request for you to fill out on open records requests and we'll be more than happy to release that information to you.
So that's your new policy? Oh, progress, progress.
That's my response.
Mr. Jennings, is that appropriate? To require an open records request of, of another governmental body? To require an open records request of a of another governmental body?
Um, I think that's a tough question to ask, Commissioner Andrew, but open records requests, we require the public to do it. So, whether or not they wanna do that or not, um, I would express to people on the school side and on this side, you know, working together, I would hope that you work together, but to say is that a proper response? Yes, an open record request can't, should be made, it doesn't happen.
And I might add, we've made no difference for anyone that's made those requests. Like I said, fill it out, and we'll be more than happy to share it with you because it is sensitive information.
So, it works both ways, I suppose. Should the school board request information from the county commission, perhaps an open records request needs to be filled out on the part of the school board as well.
I I wouldn't be offended if that was the case, no.
Mr. Patton? See how, see how, I'm not quite, I'm not quite done. See how silly that is?
Well, you know, it might appear silly on the surface, but again, when you look at the intent, the possible intent of why that request might be made, Mr. Bush, there's an obligation to protect as well. And, you know, you I know you're smiling up here like that, that is so silly, but there is an obligation to protect, the same way that you would want your personal information protected as well.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
Yes, I'd like to know if all those questions that come to Bush that I have, and this may be a question from Mayor Jennings as well, so. Is this actually commission business? Because don't we just appoint the director and then we release their funds? So then we don't have any control over who she hires and fires and all that, although we could, you know, her position. And it would appear that this could be settled if Mr. Bush just went to Dr. Wright's office or something, you know, truly have an address, and they could communicate with each other, you know, without having to stand on the, you know, code during the election year.
Mr. Stafford?
Well, I similar, ask the same question to ask uh our attorney, Mr. Jennings. Since this is in the commission's business, we are not to, I understand, uh, from C task, we are not to micromanage or direct the school board or the administration. Our work to do is to fund them, is that not correct?
No.
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot said in the last two minutes, very broad questions. First of all, y'all don't appoint the director of school, Board of Education. The what? No, 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 she's, he is the only employee hired by the by the Board of Education. The issues about open records are valid issues. There is personal identifiable information that we have to look at, at the school system, at the county mayor, at my office, anywhere else. And a lot of those find their way to me. And all I'm trying to do is to make sure that we don't disclose somebody's social security number or something that's not supposed to be out, okay? They have a HR director that does that, and frankly, I'm frightened of that. Um, the responsibilities of the county commission are to fund the budget that they bring over here today. They adopt, they present their budget, and you can't line out them, veto it, or anything like that. You determine what type of money you're gonna give them, and then make it work for the other. What y'all asking are very broad questions. There are always extenuating facts, particular facts that can change the answer to any question. Please don't take the answers I've given you tonight and apply to every question that might arise, or that's not fair. It's not fair to anybody else that's in a position of authority to have to deal with those. That's where I'm coming from. And there are a lot of, you know, there there just, there's always facts involved that have to be dealt with individually. There's just really no blanket statement that covers it.
Mr. Keith, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I wasn't completed. I would also like to ask you if we were to disclose this information as open record, there could be, and I'm not an attorney, I'm a realtor by profession, there could be some litigation provided if wrong information is provided at some point in time, is that not correct?
Well, it could be, let's let's, let's let's make it clear now, if it's an open record, it is not something that is protected by law. Anybody in the state of Tennessee, the Leaden County Commissioners, school board members, teachers, anybody can make a request to get that. So, those are open records. I don't want it to look like we're trying to hide something. What we're trying to do is to, if when we look at those things, is to make sure we redact the personally identifiable information so that we don't get sued by somebody for invasion of the privacy. And and that's what we're talking about.
You good, Miss Stafford? Mr. Keith?
I just sitting here taking notes, and I don't agree with a lot of the questions that you were asked. One of the words that was used was improper. I don't believe for a second you would do anything that's improper. As far as terminations, that's a need-to-know basis, and I don't need to know. I don't know why any of us would need to know. Uh, we we've got a lot of departments in this county, and we're gonna start requiring all the departments to tell us why everybody got terminated, anybody got terminated. I I just don't think that's our job. And I've gotten every record I've ever asked for under your administration. I appreciate that.
Mr. Patton?
So, the open record request is a courtesy, that has, that is indeed what you need, so that you have verification of what they're asking for. I mean, you can say, you know, that it's all what it is.
Again, no, i- it's more than that. The open record request, it it specifically identifies what they're looking, what they're looking for. And then you can make a determination of whether or not any of it protected information. But there there are very broad open record requests, there are very narrow open records. One thing that everybody needs to know is you are not required to assimilate any information. If there is a record and it's not protected, you're required to give it, but you're not required to make a list that doesn't exist, okay? But if there are records that exist and they're not protected, they are subject to open records and have to be disclosed.
And the process there is also, if there's no superfluous or, you know, um, requests made, I don't think that was something that was important to be very clear as far as where somebody just, you know, just for the actions, I need this, I need this, I need this.
Yeah, and let me, let me say again, that we're talking about open records. There are no two open record requests that will be Mr. McFarland may ask for it, Mr. Rich may ask it, or Ash may ask it. So, you know, it's just hard to lay down a blanket rule other than you start with the understanding that all records are open, all government records are open, unless they are statute protected. And there are great many, um, you know, law enforcement investigations, that type of thing. You can't get those because they're protected by statute.
Mr. Walker?
I'd just like to say, I think there's a request on either both sides of the school board. Mr. Bush is asking, is this new policy? I believe what we're looking at is what types of information. There's obviously certain requests that the school board has no problem because it's pretty gen- general in 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 nature. Uh, I was trained in the United States military with a confidential clearance, working in the nuclear power industry. In the private sector, I worked with pricing, and and it can be extremely sensitive and confidential in nature. Uh, I believe what we're talking about is classification of information, and I think it's very diligent for the school board when you've got classified information that's very sensitive in nature, that you do take it to that next level, you have all your paperwork signed, you make sure all your legal actions are covered, so we don't have any risk. What we're trying to do is mitigate risk here based on the classification of the information. And in any organization, any business, any government, personnel records are extremely confidential. And I think it's very important as a government body that we recognize the nature of the information being shared.
Commissioner Ash? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright. Trustees' report is on your desk, uh, I asked for a motion to approve it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Trustees' report, Mr. Major?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Hoto. As of this morning at eight-thirty, county had fifty-nine million, nine-hundred-fifty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents in your check account. Also, your report shows you you have ten different CDs, what bank they're with, how much interest, how much interest that they're drawing, and when they're matured. Also, for this tax year, two thousand seventeen taxes to be collected, we've collected ninety-eight percent of the, of a hundred and four million dollars. By the time next, next March comes, when I turn them over to the clerk and master, we will have collected over ninety-nine and about a half percent. There's some that you can't collect. This concludes my report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Mr. Major. Road Superintendent, Mr. Steve Murphy.
Mayor, Commissioners? Uh, to this date, we have paved twenty-eight point six-four-three miles. Uh, our guys are still out patching, so if you, if you do have some patching in your area that needs to be done, just call the office, let us, let us know. Uh, our guys still out mowing the edges of road, cutting our trees back, and uh just doing our regular maintenance. And that concludes my report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The Ag Center report, Mr. Smith, and the Expo, Ms. Tooms, will be next month. We just got back from Iowa, and so we asked to move those to next month for the report. Your release on life report is in your packet. Are any questions for that one?
County Public Works Committee, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
The Ag Center, Mayor, Commissioner McFarland.
Uh, no report.
County Patrol, Marla, Commissioner Marla.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Van Hara. Still report that tax, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
Favor television, Commissioner Walker.
Yes, uh, Mayor Hoto, fellow Commissioners, we came this evening, we met uh a couple of occasions. We met uh April twentieth, June eighteenth. We tried to convene a meeting on the twenty-eighth, but we did not have a form, but there is a brief summary there. We can convene a meeting this evening at six-thirty, right before the commission meeting. Those minutes will be in next month's packet. There is one small detail that needs to be corrected on the April twentieth. Uh, it's specifically mentioned DTC receiving a one-point-seven-two-five million dollar grant. And right below that, they matched it with two million dollars, so a total of three-point-seven-two-five million dollars will be uh spent expanding broadband in the county there. Uh, that's all I have, I move that these minutes be accepted and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Mayor Jennings said he would correct, leave corrections on the minutes for you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Development Tourism, Commissioner Vanatta?
Development Tourism Committee met on Tuesday, June the twenty-sixth at five-thirty in the commission meeting room. I move that they be, uh, received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ethics, Commissioner Ash? Finance, Commissioner Glover? Health and Welfare, Commissioner Stafford?
Yes, sir, fellow Commissioners, the uh Health and Welfare met on Monday, June eighteenth, at six-thirty PM in the upstairs conference room. If there are no questions, uh, corrections or deletions, I move these minutes be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion now? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Insurance, Commissioner Ash? Judicial, Commissioner Keith? Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
Planning and zoning met June twelfth, uh, of this year, uh, five-thirty, at the court ready, made you to be taxed, you would be flipped by the sun.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Recreation, Commissioner Vanatta? Rules, Commissioner Muncher? Urban Top Facility Board, Commissioner Rich?
Mr. Chairman, the uh Urban Top Facility Board met on July the thirteenth uh at the Road Commission Office, uh, minutes in your pack, or on your desk tonight, making motion, these be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Finance Director Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard?
Good evening, we are uh willing to closing the books for the two thousand eighteen fiscal year. I believe uh a few months ago, when we had our audit committee meeting, we said we'd try to have another one in the middle of July, so just to throw that out there, we were gonna go through the things that we were um procedures that we were using for year-end close and sort of share those with the audit committee so they could sort of get a glimpse into into what's going on there. Um, otherwise, I believe you all have seen the needs list from the packets in the prior months. Um, I think it's appropriate to share with you at this time that it looks like our total growth for the year is gonna be uh the largest since I've been here, honestly, five-point-one-two percent. So, uh, so that is the largest. Now, I did go back to some years um prior to the crash, and there were some eight percents and whatnot, so there were some, you know, fairly recent that were, you know, larger than that, so that appears to be where we are at the moment. Uh, just for equivalent sake, you can about equate one percent in growth to a million dollars. So, from a equivalent sake standpoint, that's a pretty, pretty safe thing to do. Um, I will leave it at this time for any questions that you might have for me.
Yes, sir, I do have one, how much is the penny worth now?
Four-hundred-and-seven thousand. Seven.
Mr. Patton?
On social media, and people are asking me when I'm out, even though I don't have an opponent, I think it's still important to talk to people and ask them to vote and everything. But a couple of the questions that I've been asked is, we did not propose to um delay voting on the budget in August, correct? Have we not done that? How many years straight have we voted on our budget for?
I would go back to uh, and and some of you have been here longer, and it's quite possible. Uh, but I will go back to to say that in my seven years, we have never voted on a budget prior to August.
So, nothing was changed because of elections?
It's my belief that in the last twenty years uh or better, we've never voted on a budget prior to August. But again, in my direct experience, um, and again, if you guys will remember in two thousand twelve, when I was standing up here before you about this time, we had a proposed uh a hundred thousand dollars in the general fund fund balance. So, I proposed to you that it was impossible to pass a budget without knowing exactly where we were once the books were closed, uh, and so on. So, uh, we have never, to my knowledge, passed a budget other than in the month of August.
And uh something else in, um, so in the la- I've been here for eight years, so in the last eight years, we have voted for a property increase twice, correct?
That's correct.
Seven cents and thirty-five cents?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. So, how much in, uh, how much annual revenue is generated by these increases?
Uh, between those two, uh, about what I, what I come up with on the thirty-five cents, at that time, a penny was worth three-hundred-and-ninety thousand. So, that's about thirteen thousand, uh, thirteen million, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, excuse me. Um, as a rough breakdown of where that went, eight cents of that went to schools for their differentiated pay plan. Uh, fifteen cents of that went to county employees for the uh pay study that was done there. Uh, nine cents went to Glable Middle, one cent went to the convenience centers. Um, and there were a couple more pennies, I think that comes up to thirty-three. There were a couple more pennies in there somewhere.
Two-point-oh-seven went to WEMA.
Two-point-oh-seven went to WEMA.
Get you thirty-five-point-one-seven.
Yeah.
So, the last
So, so thirteen million, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand in twenty sixteen. Twenty-twelve, I don't remember what a penny was worth off the top of my head, so just use the same three-hundred-and-ninety thousand that we uh that was in effect in twenty sixteen. That would be two million, seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand. So, between those two, about sixteen million was the total tax increase.
So, so how the local tax collection increases um compare with other counties around us, same size?
Yeah, I got curious about that myself, so I did, I did go back and look. Um, I looked at the audit reports, the local tax section of the audit reports. So, for Montgomery County in two thousand ten, um, well, their increase from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, local taxes, which would include property tax, which would include uh local option sales tax, basically theirs was uh almost forty-one million dollar increase in tax collections in Montgomery County. Uh, I'm sure they had a tax increase up there too. I didn't go back and study the history of tax increases in these various counties. Rutherford Counties has increased seventy-eight million in that period of time. Uh, Sumner Counties has increased forty-two million in that period of time. Uh, Williamson Counties has increased a hundred-and-nineteen million during that period of time. And ours increased thirty-nine million in that period of time. So, as far as the overall increase in local tax revenues, we are the, we are the lowest on that rung of counties that we we're sort of in the same category with. Of course, no sense comparing us to Davidson, they're, they're way out there beyond.
And my final question, did we ever vote or otherwise propose a forty-seven million dollar tax increase?
I put the question back to the county commission. Do you remember ever voting on a $47 million tax increase?
Thank you. Those that answers my questions I've been getting.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes, going back to this year's growth, 5.112% in the payments were forward, so.
Yes, sir.
What is, how many millions is that? How much growth is that?
Well, it's about, how many pennies? So if you take, which I didn't bring, I'm a calculator dependent accountant, I'm not going to lie. So if you take 5 million and divide it by 407,000, that'll tell you about how many pennies that is. It's over 10. Probably getting in the 12 to 14 range in total.
When you speak about this growth rate, is that just property tax only or is that all?
That's property tax only. That's property tax only.
Do you have a feel for all the other taxes we've collected? How much tax increase?
Uh, that's part of the process that we're working on with the budget. And I've been so busy with the close that I haven't gotten into the revenue projections yet. But I can tell you the hotel motel tax is probably up double figures. I think last year overall, it was up 12%. It's probably up something similar to that. Business tax, I couldn't tell you for sure right now without looking. You know, we try to look at that obviously every year, look at the trend, you know, how it's trending in terms of up or down, what a reasonable conservative projection is, you know, going forward into the new year.
I would think, I would think so, yeah. I would think that, that maybe not at the same rate.
You know, maybe not at the same rate because you guys know, I mean, you can just look around and see all the construction going on. You see how long houses are staying on the market, which is in some cases 10 days or less, you know, and there, there's a pending sign of.
Any other questions, Mr. Maynard? You hear a motion to approve his report? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Keith.
Second, 2018 at 5 o'clock in the upstairs conference room. Minutes are in your packet and I move they be approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? And resolutions now, Commissioner Keith?
Resolution 18-7-2, resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, in support of Wilson County being designated a broadband-ready community. Move to approve.
Any discussion now? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. I don't, I don't think so and, but I have it on my list. Any reason, Sarah, that we have this on the list for four votes? No? All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Resolution passes. Commissioner Keith?
18-7-3, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, adopting the 2018 edition of the International Residential Code. Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, I have one question I'd like to ask.
Okay.
I would like to see, I know this is a Tennessee code and I mean, this is a international residential code. But I would like to see the planning and zoning get together and see if we can't put together some kind of resolution with a little bit more teeth of enforcement in it to kind of clean up our county. I know the city of Lebanon is making sure their, their city's staying clean, but I'd like to see us get together and try to come with something to clean up our county a little bit. Our county's growing, it's looking good. I've already discussed a little bit of it with Mr. McFarland and I think, Mayor, I've laid something on your desk as well as Mr. Jennings to go over and look at. I'm not an attorney, but I try to do the best I can and I would, I would really, really like to see us get together. I know that there was a meeting called and I was not informed of the meeting until way after the fact. So if it's something that the planning and zoning can do to help clean this county up, I'd really, really appreciate it.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Stafford, I got your resolution and I'm already trying to do it for the county attorney. We're going to look and get the proper wording in it and we're going to thank you about our next meeting. Would you please make sure I'm following that meeting? I, I won't call you for, for that only, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Concerning the. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed?
18-7-4, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee. We done done that one?
I believe you're good.
Nice job, you're done.
Do it twice, can we vote again?
You get done quicker than Mr. Justice every time. Any old business to come before this body? Any new business to come before this body? There is no public hearing, so I'll have one more motion. All in favor, say aye. We are.